The most common time that you can help somebody is when they're down. And there are a lot of people that are down because they're at the end roads and they don't know where to turn. That when people come into any of our branch locations, that you outreach your arms and you help them. And you see what their problems are. I think that's what we brought to this industry, I think that's what we brought to this community, that we try to outreach to the people that need us the most, and we're here to help serve them.
Welcome to the Spencer Board of Selectmen regular meeting. It's currently about 6:00 PM. If you all rise with us and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item, approval of minutes from the business meeting of May 28, 2014. Have you got a chance to review those?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Would anyone have to come forward for citizen's input?
Yes, sir.
Can you state your name and address for the rest of our audience?
Bill Shamet, 6 Dale Street. Here is co-chairman of the Park and Recreation Commission. My last appearance before you, I indicated that I had personally donated some money matched by my parents to go towards Luther Hill Park. I am pleased to announce that the first significant result of that effort has occurred. I'd like to publicly thank the Bemis and Proudly Trust for a $4,000 donation to the Luther Hill Park donation account. And I would continue to urge those that want to see the park reopen, the beach reopen at some point in the future, and those services restored, to please donate. We have a donation account for Luther Hill Park, a donation account for Olgarah Park, a general donation account for any of the parks, as well as a revolving fund. So the public, or anyone, can feel free to donate to any of those accounts, and that would help in some small way to begin to try and make things better. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Communications, do we have any communications?
Mr. Administrator?
Oh, geez. I couldn't get through. All right. Name and address for the record, please.
You were trying to stiff me, weren't you?
Yeah, I'm trying my best.
I still have the same name and I still live at the same house.
It is strange to look at you.
Did you spell that? How's Chris treating? He's doing OK? Doing OK? Just want to talk to you guys about the fireworks. As I said, Wendy's taking care of my dad, so she's not able to do much fundraising. So, and we've been getting phone calls, so I told everybody I'll know by this Friday. So if we don't have money by this Friday, we can't do it. I mean, I can do it, but I, we can't raise the money. There's just no way with her having to be at home 24/7 with him. So, just so we can get an update, maybe get the update in the paper, because we need like 10 grand by the end of the week, and it's not forthcoming. So if we get it, then fine. It's a go, and it'll be the 5th of July. But if not, then we'll have to skip this year.
Can I maybe do some changes for you?
I mean, if you can, you know, by the end of the week, I just, I can't do it, and she can't do it.
Call you tomorrow?
She was the one that always did 90% of it, but she's got a full-time taking care of the old boy job right now, so.
OK.
I want to get an update, see if we can get it in the paper, maybe on the website, so.
Call you tomorrow if you need me to go over whatever you want.
Yeah, if we get it by Friday, then it's on. If not, then we'll skip it this year.
10,000 by Friday. You know, we were thinking maybe some, maybe a scaled back change, change of location, anything to save a few shekels. Yep. All right, Mr. Bertheam.
All right, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Anybody else? Communications, we have none. New business, action item, easement relocation, Paul's Drive. Mr. Administrator?
Yep, tonight, Mr. Lucia's here to answer any questions, but there's a little bit of information in the packet from our town council, and also an email exchange between myself, Mr. Lucia from Webster First, and also Kevin David, their attorney, regarding some lots, in particular at Paul's Drive. Paul's Drive was a subdivision that was approved in the early 2000s, went through the process of a bank foreclosure, recalling construction mortgage on that, taking it over, eventually completing the project. One of the problems that has occurred is the planning board had approved an easement at the back of some of the lots for the Snowbirds, for Snowmobile Trail, to traverse through that project. What happened is during the course of that time of the development project, and finally getting completed, the zoning had changed, and what that had done was increased the minimum required to make the lot buildable, going from 40,000 square feet to 60,000 square feet. In order to make Lot 7, as you see on the plane here, buildable, some additional land was acquired from the butter, and based on that, they'd like to relocate the easement. I think the plan shows you a pretty good picture of what they're trying to do. The easement and the dash line at the rear of the original lot would kind of be going through the backyard, if you will. So relocation of easement is being requested. We consulted with our town council and the bank's attorney, and it appears that it can just be done via an approval and vote of the Board of Selectmen. That vote would then be recorded at the regishee deeds with this plan, and they'd be able to move forward with the sale of the property. So, is there any questions?
That lot there, it looks like it just shifted about 20 feet back, no?
Basically 50 feet back, you had to add for the extra, it was like a half acre that had to be put on there to get to the R, was R 60. So we had to get to the R 60. And basically, the entry, the point of entrance is still going onto Mr. Hayes' property. It's relocated over. Of course, he's OK with it, because the easement actually ends right there on our property. He doesn't have an easement on his. And I also talked to the president of Snowbirds as well, and they're happy with it, because we weren't trying to take it away from them. We're just trying to relocate, so they were happy with that as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have just have a question, just a bit of explanation. How is it the board is involved in easements? When usually people could do this privately, right?
Well, I'll explain that a little bit. The way that it was done by the town, because it was put on, and again, I'm not an attorney here either, but I spent a lot of time with mine over this issue. And the issue was that we had to go to the planning board first to get it relocated, to get the plan approved, to make sure it was a buildable lot. Once we get to the point of having to relocate the easement, we were trying to figure out, really, who does, who is the easement tied to, and how, you know, who is it granted to? I guess the way that the statute reads, because there was no one actually listed, it was just an easement that was approved by the town on the planning board, when they originally did the zoning and all that on the plan.
Thanks, sir.
That automatically defaults that it's kind of an easement to the town for recreational purposes. So in order to get, to relocate it to the planning board, that's OK, and it can basically be done, but in order to get proper title insurance and all that stuff for the future use, and for the future people who want to sell the property, to clear it, we just need a letter authorizing it from the Selectmen, and it was OK. Because I guess it defaults to the town, as an easement to the town almost.
All right.
So I learned through that experience also.
OK.
It's really a formality, just to clear the title for anybody who wants to buy the property.
Any other questions from the board?
Not from me. Mr. Chairman, I vote that we approve the changes.
Did you do a specific form of motion?
I believe the letter was, was sent that had to be signed, correct?
Yeah, we have a letter that's signed, so maybe just a formal, just make it a little more formal in that you approve the relocation of the 20-foot wide recreation easement on Lot 7, as shown on the plan.
And so moved.
Is Kevin all set with it?
Yes.
No problem with Kevin?
Kevin David?
Kevin Hayes?
No, no, actually, he's.
He's all set?
Yes.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Very good, we have it.
So I'll get you a sign, I'll get you a sign agreement tomorrow.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too. Next action item, discussion of the road race approval for MHPI.
Mr. Chairman, tonight, we have Mr. Paul O'Mu from MHPI here tonight, and he is requesting on behalf of MHPI permission for the Proudly Challenge Road Race. You have a cover letter from Paul to your board. You can see it's scheduled for Saturday, September 13th, and it looks like he has some props or some, some materials for discussion, and I'll turn it over to Paul.
Good evening. It's nice to be back in front of you. It's been a long time since we've, we've been here. Yes, I'm here as, day by day, I serve as the chief financial officer for MHPI Inc., which is, we own Senior Living at Proudly. By evenings and off-hours, I am the race director for the Proudly Challenge Road Race, one-mile walk-run. They always call them fun runs, I never understood when you're running. And then a 5K, which is 3.1 mile run. We call it the challenge because it's, it's become known by runners as one of the more challenging courses. You run downhill, it basically, it's, we start on the terrace in front of Senior Living, North Street, Highland, down Hastings, run about a mile and a quarter out, and then you run back. And the challenge is you're running back uphill. The runners always prefer to run out up and run down coming home, so it's been quite a challenge. The first race we had, we had 42 people, and then in the second race, we did a little bit more advertising around with the banner that we had across Route 9, and we ended up drawing 200 people for our second race, which was an amazing result. Last year, we had some changes in our organization, excuse me, as far as personnel. We also had some other areas that we needed to focus on, so we weren't able to put the race on last year. But we are back, and we feel better than ever. We've had a lot of inquiry from runners that have run in the past. When are you coming back? What are you going to do? And so, you know, our, our Board of Directors has made it clear to us that they want this race to run. It's very important to us. The money that we use, I would say 95% of the money that we use, get is used to put on programs in our, in our building. I'm not sure if you've all had the chance to tour the building, the school, what we, one of the areas that we're very most proud of is we kept the auditorium with the stage. And so it seats, I want to say it seats 167 people, and we've had a number of programs that we offer, not just for our tenants, but we invite the outside surrounding areas, Spencer, the Brookfields, Lester, for them to come. And so there've been, in the last, I want to say, in the last 12 months, there have been a total of eight programs, and they range from historical to something around health-related, so how to be, you know, less stressed and so forth, and things like that, some yoga, and things like that. So we're doing the race so that we can really put the money back in to the town for the seniors. So I brought my board, in case you want to see the route itself, but it's, I mean, it's pretty much straight out and straight back in. The one-mile walk-run is a little flatter. We just go North Street, and we go up to Lake School, and then we, and then we walk back. And it's great, it's great for families to walk. We found that we had a lot of people with their small children were going out, and so that's been great for us. And we've had a great partnership with the various businesses. Spencer Bank has been a major supporter of our, our run, has of all the other banks in the town and other, and other businesses. There've been folks from, from the town itself. Adams Group has been great as far as supporting us, as far as letting us use parking areas on that Saturday. So it's, it's not just us doing it, it is the town that really participates. Thus far, the first step I took in this process is that we talked to, to the police chief to make sure that, in his mind, it was safe, and he's granted our approval, this grant of approval to us. So that's why I'm here today, is one, for the route, and two, is the other pieces that we'd like to be able to hang a banner again across. We went to the expense of putting up our own wires and so forth two years ago, and there was an issue with that, so it's been proposed with it. Maybe there's a, you already have wires downtown, and when that banner comes down, that we perhaps could put ours up as well, advertising our race, so.
Paul, could she again? Again, will you need a police detail for this route?
We will, yep, we will, and we will, we will ask for that as well. I think the chief is, when he gives his approval, we're assuming that there'll be a detail that the, we'll go to the fire department, and we'll make sure that the EMTs are there. All of that safety team will, will be in place. We know that's required, and so we will absolutely be securing all of that.
Yeah, the only reason I bring that up is because of recent events. You should probably, we, we've eliminated overtime for our police departments. That's a, that's an expense you're going to want to look at, settling up with the police chief.
Oh, we know, we know what the, the minimums are that have to be handled and so forth. We, we built that into all of our budgeting as well.
Great, great. That was my, that was my concern. Other than, it's a, it's a great event. I was worried that I was going away for good after last year's.
Oh, no. We.
Any other questions?
In this town, we don't, EMTs aren't through the fire department, it's through Spencer Rescue Squad, you have to contact.
That is correct.
Okay.
And I didn't bring, if I, the, one of the great things that, the first things we did is we said, when we do this function from, you know, I said, we're going to put a how-to book together. And so my colleague, who's no longer with the company, I had a partner in crime, who was really one of the founding partners with me, we put how-to books, so we know who to call, but we know that the order in which you call is get the, the primary safety officer, and then we come and see you. So once, you know, if we have granted approval, then we'll go from there, so.
Any other questions for the board?
Mr. Chairman, I hate to see great graphics wasted, so let's.
So bring it up.
Good to see what the course is here, people on television.
Basically, it's the, the one-mile course is basically, we start on the terrace down here at our, at Senior Living at Proudly, and you're just going up North Street, bending around down Highland, and you know that's a really steep hill, and then just taking it all the way down Hastings. And then, last year, when we had 200 people, one of the problems we had is the top runner ran down the middle of the street, and we tell them, you gotta stay to one side. And it was kind of confusing, and when they turned around and went back, and they're running in, you know, like, either way. But it's, so you're going downhill all the way, and it's a lovely trip, but then when you start going back up, it's all uphill, and then this last piece of going up Highland, and then just finishing back in front of Senior Living at Proudly. And then the smaller race just goes up, the Lake Street School is up in this area. It's just a quick walk, and then we take a quick walk through that historical cemetery that's behind our spot. So it's, I mean, we've been lucky. It's been a great day, that weather in September is, it's just crisp. One of my favorite sights at that time, when I'm out, I'm out at 6:00 in the morning putting out the, playing out the route, and you just see the sun coming up over the, over the hills. It's really, it's really great. So, for people who want to know more about us, it's, we have our own website, www.proudly5k.com, and they can sign up, they can sponsor, and they can be a volunteer, whatever they want, so.
Paul, one more thing we want to mention, because it'll be a big, big part of your planning, as far as the banner. We don't own the, the pools where these things get strung over. I mean, I don't know what you would think about whether Down by Mexicali is the location that people are telling you about.
I'll have to coordinate with Paul. There is some wires there, I can talk to him out of there.
Yeah, it's, we don't give a, we can't give approval for that, that's not our, that's not our purview.
We can talk about that.
OK, that's fine. But we, again, we would need to know what the dimensions are, so that, you know, I'm sure the town has certain requirements and restrictions, so.
And the only other thing is when you make the banner.
Yes, sir.
Make sure it's not solid.
Make sure, yes, but that's what we learned the last time.
The other one, we end up taking down. Couple nights, we end up taking it down.
On Labor Day weekend, I remember that.
If they can make what it is, the air goes through it, that's the kind we want.
And that's what we saw the last time, when we were looking at the one that was up downtown, in the middle of town, we noticed that it was really a mesh and with holes in it. So absolutely, we learned too.
OK.
Anything else from the board? Do we need a motion for this? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the road race for MHPI. Maybe I'll include a date.
It's on the 13th.
Great, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Good luck, Paul.
Good luck.
Thank you all so much.
Good to see it happening again.
Somebody's there?
Thanks, Paul. Yep, sounds good.
The last new business item, you vote to dissolve the David Proudly High School Building Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the town clerk was, and I have been working on appointments or reappointments as we approached July 1st for different committees, and one of the committees that is still hanging out there was the David Proudly High School Committee, and she asked that I go through the process of having the board dissolve that committee, as it's not currently in operation, so.
There's so much activity going on in that area, so. All right, any other questions on this? Do I have a motion?
Just a second. I'm sorry, may I wait for a motion and then discuss? OK.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to dissolve the David Proudly High School Building Committee.
Thank you, I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I just have a question about how this works. It's, it was a building committee meeting on behalf of, of the district, so do we have the authority to dissolve it, or how does, how does the town?
Well, we have, we make our own appointments as part of that, so we're basically eliminating, or a part of it. What happens is, she has, in the annual town report, she has a report, she has a list of all elected and appointed officers. So what she'd like to do is, from the town report, you keep carrying committees, members over, and committees that, that aren't functioning anymore, it'd be nice to dissolve them. So if at such time this committee gets started up again, then we go through that process of appointing our members, so. But this is basically dissolved, not a part of it.
So the committee was made up of members appointed by the, by both towns and the district? Is that?
We had, we had, we had the opportunity to appoint our members representing the town to that committee.
All right.
I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Administrator, we don't have any more of the committees like this that are languishing with, that we can clean up, and?
Nope, nope, this is it for now.
OK, great. Old business, discussion, fire department training. Chief Parsons, good evening.
Good evening.
I think we were here to clarify, discuss the, the email regarding some of the reduction services.
There's a letter in your packet that came from Bob on May 14th, once the, the funding for the budget for FY15 was impacted by the overrides not, not being approved. Bob submitted a letter talking about, actually reiterating things that he had gone over during his services presentation to your board during the, the public hearings that we held, and when he talked about certain concerns that, that he had related to certain services that weren't, maybe wouldn't be able to continue funding, wasn't supported, and that was kind of the reason why that training item was added to the override. So after the override failed, that training wasn't able to move forward, Bob sent the letter, and here he is to explain a little better than I can.
Right. So basically, the administrator said, during my service review, I did speak of this, that without this added training, we're kind of kidding ourselves that we can perform certain tasks. Back in May of 2012, I had sent a memo to the town administrator explaining that as well, since we had lost that funding, we were no longer providing any training for the rescue company, which was a separate company within itself, and we effectively had lost one of our normal monthly training sessions as well. Since that time, we've been trying to do some of it within our own normal training that we have. We only have 12 training sessions a year. Basically, we're, get to the point, and this is something that just came about through the night, we've been talking for months at our offices meetings about this, about doing away with these types of services, because we cannot proficiently do them without the training. We have a large amount of people that have had minimum amount of training. Captain Donahue, who's in charge of the rescue and in charge of the training for it, just spent two months with Fire District 7, going through numerous trainings on all of these items. He's going to be part of the tech rescue team for the Fire District itself. In this day and age, there's no community that can perform these tasks proficiently and safely for any of their firefighters without training. We have a large number of new firefighters on our department. About the only thing that we're able to do every year is to do vehicle extrication training. Now, I did mention in my memo to you that we would perform everything that we could once we arrived, according to our training and safety of the firefighters. I am not going to put someone in jeopardy and risk their life for someone that, and put someone in there that's not trained on how to do it. It's not going to happen. And every community is feeling the same, same punch. If we're not going to be able to train our people in these specific areas, we're not going to perform these tasks. And I am not going to tell any other community that we can do these tasks if we haven't been trained in it. The last dive team call-out we had was right here in town. The young female was, was in the fatal accident on Paxton Road. We got no divers that day. We only had three people that were trained in the cold water rescue suits that arrived that day. The town of Lester, which is in the same boat as us, they had done away with their dive team as well, they arrived with no divers. The only people that showed up that day with divers was the town of North Brookfield with two, and they only have five. So this is, we're moving, you're talking about a regionalization, that's what we're doing. We're moving more towards a regionalized technical rescue. We're going to respond. People are going to call us, we're going to respond to these type of incidents no matter what. But we're only going to do based on what we have for training. If we put anybody in harm's way on something that they're not trained to do, we're liable for them. It's just not going to happen. We're going to do everything we can. There was a nice article in the Auburn Mass Daily about the District 7 technical rescue team, and it talks right in here. Technical rescue is a high-risk, low-frequency event that if you're not trained on it frequently, it becomes a perishable skill. The act of crawling into a confined space or jumping into a trench to make a rescue is dangerous enough. If the members do not have the proper initial and continuous training or equipment, the potential exists that will not make the situation better. The public has an expectation, as they should, that fire and rescue services are arriving in an emergency situation, highly skilled to handle that emergency. If our members become trapped after an ill-intended rescue because we are not proficient, we don't make the situation better, we make it worse. And that's where we're at. This is very poignant, exactly where our department is at this point without any training. Like I said, this, this reduction in services, nothing new. This was coming. We held off until we saw to see if we got the money restored, to see if we could provide the training. That didn't happen, we had to discontinue it. This has been talked about for the last six to eight months amongst the offices. We do a training calendar, two years in advance. As you can see, there's 12 training sessions. Four of them this year alone, or five of them, one with CPR, the other four were first responder training. We don't have the ability with these 12 sessions to go into specialized training that takes a lot of work and a lot of repetition. It's just like anything else. If you have a pro baseball player, they do batting practice every day. Why do they do that? Because they have to stay proficient. They take grounders every day to stay proficient. If we haven't done these things in two years, we're not staying proficient. Someone's going to get hurt. Someone's going to tie the knot incorrectly, and someone's going to get hurt. And I'm not about to ready to put someone into that situation. So this isn't something that was just nilly-dilly, just brought out, this has been, I brought it up in May of 2012, brought it up during my service review when I was here, and all I'm doing is following through on what we're doing. We will still respond, we'll do what we can do based on our training, but we're not going to put anybody in a situation where they're going to get hurt or killed. It's not worth it.
Thanks, Chief. Questions from the board?
Just so we're clear, Chief, so you, last year, you didn't have, you know, we added, we tried to add the money to the budget, it was part of the override.
That's correct.
OK.
Just so we're clear, Chief, so you, last year, you didn't have, we, we, you know, we added, we, we tried to add the money to the budget. It was, it was part of the override.
That's correct.
Okay. You didn't have it last year, but we were still doing this, but you feel like we?
We, we did one training last year for high angle.
Okay.
And like I said, we-
Could you define high angle?
High angle is, is saying, if we had an incident, like today, today Sutton had an incident at Purgatory Chasm, where they called in the District Seven Technical Rescue Team, someone down over, over a cliff down there, down on a rock ledge. That would be a high angle, climbing over the edge with ropes, going down to get them, putting them in a Stokes basket, and bringing them up. If I haven't tied knots in two years, would you wanna get in that?
So, you're, you're saying is we, we stretched it last year with, with, without?
Like I said, we have been talking about this for a while, saying if, if we can't do this training, we can't stay proficient. We, we're really kidding ourselves and everybody else. Um, like you said, we're gonna respond, we'll do whatever we can when we get there. But I don't wanna tell anybody, excuse me, any other community, that if you need a high-angle rescue team, call us, we'll respond. Because it's not gonna happen. If you want a divers, call us, we'll respond. It's not gonna happen. We just don't have the people. They're not trained, and they haven't, they haven't done it in a while.
Tell me about the District Seventeen team, where do they come from then?
There's twenty-six cities and towns within District Seven, all the way from Warren to Blackstone. There's members from almost every community, they belong to this District Seven Technical Rescue. So, we have one, um, Sturbridge may have one or two, I know Auburn's got three or four-
Members.
Members of this team. They just did two months of training through the Mass Fire Academy. They had, uh, a quarter of a million dollar grant, they got through home and security to do the training and to maintain it. And they're also able to buy, uh, equipment as well. They have to stay proficient. They gotta train all the time with it. So, if we needed them, they would be notifying all these other area towns, excuse me, to come and respond to our community for an event. We would do whatever we could while we're waiting for them. Whatever we're trained to do, we would do, and we would assist them once they arrive. Technical rescues, like the one down at Purgatory Chasm today, they're there for hours. It's not a quick and dirty event, um, to go down there. Same thing with Sutton. Sutton does have members at Tech Rescue Team, but if there's no one around that day, that team is, the department's gonna do the best they can until the trained people arrive. And that would be the same in any other community.
So, we have one person you referred to, your, your, um-
Correct, Captain Donahue. And he's another individual, he's around during the night and weekends, but he's not around during the day.
But he, he, if he responded to something close by or in Spencer, he would be joined by other members of this?
Correct.
He couldn't do anything?
It's, it's very similar to the hazardous materials teams that are throughout the state right now, that the state developed. They did this a number of years ago as well. It's like the town of Leicester used to have their own hazardous materials team, they've done away with that because they cannot maintain the training and things like that. Uh, so now the state has picked up the training, and the state has these teams available throughout the state, and they're based on individuals from this department, that department. And as they get called, they get paged out through their phones or whatever, and then they respond either directly to the scene or they, or they respond with equipment. It's, it's very similar how they're doing it today with this tech rescue versus, uh, the hazardous. Very, very similar, other than the district is running it. There is also statewide teams that are gonna be coming out of this as well.
So, we won't be without help, but you're saying it's gonna take longer because we, we don't have the, the training invested in our local people?
We've been kidding ourselves in the last couple of years that we could actually do something. Yeah, we had three or four that were probably trained, trained enough to do it. But we had a lot of people that weren't trained, that haven't been through the training, and we're really kidding ourselves that we could accomplish these facts. If we had received the money again in this budget, we would've gone right back into it and really started to train to get back into it to be proficient. Uh, like I said, we've been talking about it at the officer level for, for quite a while.
Bobby, you, you mentioned something that we didn't hear when we first heard this, was that's liability to the town? Say more detail you can give?
Uh, well, it, it, just like anything else, if, if you have, um, if you're performing some type of rescue and you're not trained in it, and you either injure the person or, or kill them in the event of doing something, yes, the town could be held liable for it.
Also, if the firefighter themselves is injured.
Correct.
And he is directed to go in there, or he goes in there, but he gets killed.
If we're doing, if we're doing anything outside the scope of our training, and something happens, the liability is there. It's the same reason why now we require firefighter one-two certification for firefighters on the department. Because if they don't have that certification, they don't have the training, and we can't maintain these minimum trainings that we do based on that firefighter one-two training, and something happens, the liability falls back on us. If you just send someone out there with no training, and it's just like OSHA. If you send someone down into a trench that's got no trench training, and send him jump down into a hole, and he gets killed, the other guy gets killed, that company is gonna be fined. There's no doubt.
I've had the opportunity to talk to some of you guys about this training, and, you know, in other industries, like, such as, say, nursing, you gotta do a certain number of CPUs to, to stay current in training, or, uh, and we, I'm hearing a lot of this, these, these general areas. I mean, is there, is there a detailed process, or, you know, number of hours you've gotta do to, to stay, to say, stay current? Or is this a once a year?
Right now, they provide a, a certification for it. Um, right now, they don't have, that you have to maintain so many hours through the course of it to maintain that certification. They've never done that. But I can see it coming because of that liability, because it's a, you have to stay proficient, there's gonna be a skill involved with it. Uh, very similar to, if you, uh, uh, just Kim Burkum just called me the other day, that they just go whack because they didn't have certain certification that we're gonna try and provide for them, for first aid and CPR, which they don't have. Uh, if they, if you don't have it in a private, if we didn't have this training and certifications in the private industry, you would be getting fined probably today if you were gonna be performing these tasks.
Great. Any other questions for the board?
I just wanted, Bobby, listen, you know, nobody understands us more than I do when it comes to public safety. You know, our concern was, and just so you know where the board was coming from when we went to it, it wasn't so much, I mean, you're the strong chief, you're responsible for every guy in your department, we understand that. I think it was the feeling of the board, and correct you guys, because, but, is, when we got this, it was like, here you go, guys, this is the way it is. Okay? We knew it through the conversation over the course of everything going on. It was more of getting blindsided, we felt, as a board. And believe me, I don't think anybody should go in harm's way without any training, I mean, it happens in every day, right? And I think that was a concern of the board at that time, but, I mean, it just seems ridiculous.
Well, if you remember, if, if you remember, Crockett, during my service review, I did bring this up. And I did bring it up that we need to, we need to really seriously look at not doing it anymore if we're not gonna be able to fund the training.
And that's when you added the thirty thousand, so that's, I think that's where Bob and I were talking, and Bob was a little surprised that you guys were surprised because he went over it, said, I can't do these things, we haven't had, we had training at one time, it's gone away. And if we're gonna continue to do certain things, it needs to be restored. And that's when John made a motion or, or discussion to add thirty thousand dollars into the override.
Listen, I, I get it, I, I get it, I mean, it's, it, but I just wanted him to know where all this came from, and, and, you know, nobody should have to go out in harm's way without proper training and put their life in danger, it just doesn't make any sense.
Oh, if you have a question, I'm more than happy to, I, I don't mind coming and, and explaining it. I mean, I got a stack of line-of-duty deaths of firefighters not trained, you know, doing specialized rescues.
I try to stop down as much as I can, you know?
I think this was, I think this was, this letter did it formalize what he was talking about, and maybe you were caught off guard by that.
Well, I think it's a, it's a judgment to snap to reality, that's really what it is.
I think, yeah, Ted, what you're saying goes terminology and, and, I guess, the general tenor. At the time, after coming, going through what we went through, we just wanted to have that conversation and clarify. And I, and I, and I was a little, I don't think I made as, as strong a connection to the, to the specialty areas of training. I was thinking it was gonna augment more of the, the, the general rescue response we have, just to, because you said we, you know, it's, it's hard to do, um, sufficient training.
Well, like I said, we used to do it twice a month on normal fire department training, then a once-a-month rescue company, which was twenty individuals within the department, um, the training. And now we're down to one of the, our normal training.
And you can't invest in specialized training when you got?
We can't, we can't if we can't do throwing ladders and pulling hose and things like that.
Last question is about, about FlexCon, they have a particular need for confined space?
Yes, they're required to have someone on standby if they enter into a confined space down there. Um, I have spoken to Darren Irish, I'd been speaking to him about this prior to anyways, because, uh, they can't enter a confined space unless they know that there is a team available. And, uh, I know for years, they always had one of our pages down there to see if we're out during the day before going into a confined space, to determine that we have the rescue company in quarters and stuff. So, I had to make sure that, that they knew that if there was a confined space rescue, it's gonna take a little while for, for trained people to get there and, and to go in and get them.
Confined space is not your normal room that you're in, you're talking about space, I, I don't know if FlexCon's like-
Confined space is, uh, is, is a term used by OSHA, entering into a, uh, space that could be an immediate, um, uh, life-or-death hazard. You're going into an oxygen-deficient area perhaps, they have to go down with meters, they have to go down with a self-contained breathing apparatus perhaps, based on, they definitely go down with meters to see if there's anything down there, any hazards that's gonna be oxygen-deficient or anything like that down there. They can't enter any of those things unless they know that there is a team available to go. Which they do know that the district team is available, which is gonna take a little while to get there.
Do you have a handle on what that means in terms of response time, is the way?
All depends on who's around during the course of the day.
Yeah, when the call goes out.
You know, it's just like us, uh, if the call comes in at ten o'clock in the morning, you may have four, five guys. Comes in at six o'clock tonight, you're probably gonna have twenty-five guys. I can't guarantee you, especially on a call volunteer department, so what you're gonna get for personnel.
So, the form this, this now takes is, is communicating to you, to other members of District Seven?
Correct, which I, which I've already communicated with, uh, Fire District, um, they're well aware of this, and, you know, they'll support us with, uh, the district teams. Everybody's gonna be starting using the district teams as it is anyways, because you just cannot maintain these items on yourself without the funds. A lot of, a lot of the equipment that we actually used to use before actually belonged to FlexCon. They allowed us to use the tripods and harnesses and things like that as well. Yep.
More questions?
Yeah, uh, on the bottom box, it says the clerk will mirror the hours in the town hall open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Why are we changing her hours from what they are now?
Because, uh, she now doesn't have daycare issues with her child going to school, he's old enough. Right now, she only works, uh, she only works Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, half-days.
Right.
So, now she's gonna work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, full days. She only has one day a week off right now, working with the PD as well. Now, she'll actually have two days off, just like everybody else in the world does. It's not gonna, not gonna change the amount of hours she works or anything, it's just that we're gonna mirror what we have at the town hall when she deals with Otis and things of that nature, and everybody will know what the set hours are. Because right now, after one o'clock in the afternoon, anybody comes in, there could be no one there at the station anyways, because she leaves right after that, leaves at one-thirty.
There's gonna be times during the week that she's not there, you know, only funded for twenty-four hours a week. So, there's gonna be other hours during the week she's not gonna be there, Bob's gonna be out doing other stuff, there's gonna be no one there. So, what we're trying to do is, she has another part-time job working for the town, we're trying to work around that, keep her, she's trained, she does great. Um, and also the fact that she does a lot of coordination with other town departments. Town Hall's gonna be closed on Thursday, it makes sense to have her be there as much as possible on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
And then the other one here is, you're gonna do inspections one day a week. So, if somebody comes in, needs something on-
If you read that, it says that's when we'll schedule most of the inspections?
Yep.
That way, they, right now, everybody, everybody comes in, and I'm running here, I'm running there, I'm running here, I'm running there, based on the need. If we can schedule it for one day, everybody knows what day it's gonna be. It's very similar to what they used to do in this community, they used to do Fridays all the time in this community, that was it. You go to the city of Worcester, they do it one day a week, you go to North Brookfield, they do it one way a week, you go to Leicester, they do it on Tuesdays. That's when we're gonna schedule, everything that we can schedule during the course of it. Propane permits, oil burn and stuff, if we can, if we have to do something during the course of the week and I'm available, I can do it. Right now, if someone calls in on Wednesday this week, I can't do it anyways because I'm not here that day, I'm not here Thursday. But if everybody knows I'm gonna be doing, I'll definitely be doing inspections on Friday, they'll know at least one day a week, there's gonna be someone here to do inspections. Right now, they call up, they could get me, they could not get, they might not get me. But at least this way here, one day a week, they'll definitely know if they can do it on Fridays. If they call up at two o'clock in the afternoon on a Monday and say, look, my closing's tomorrow, I forgot to do it, I'll go up and do it, just like I normally do. But right now, I'm going all over the place, doing inspections all day long.
Well, the thing was, one of the guys asked me, that if, say, say like in the wintertime, okay? And the boiler dies, okay, you're supposed to get the permit before you start. Now, if you're not around-
When have you ever gotten a permit before you started to work?
Use it, use it the next day. But yeah, and so long as that would not be, uh, think, it's the city of Worcester.
You know, Bo, that that's not an issue.
I know, but-
We get the permits after the work has been done, and we go and-
Somebody brought this up, you know, one of the, one of the contractors.
And then we call them up and we, we schedule the thing.
He saw the one day inspection. And he says, you know, if he gets it on a Thursday, and you don't get the thing till the following Monday or something.
You know damn well, Bo, that we don't do it.
Well, I just, he wants to know if he's getting fined.
I can't remember, no one has ever pulled, come to me and ever pulled a permit for an oil burner, you included.
Well, no, I've been talking about the boiler.
You always give them to me after, after the fact.
Right, after you put them in, yeah.
So, don't give me that.
No, just saying, he, this is a question, this wasn't me, this was a question brought up by one of the local contractors, and I just-
He should've come to be and asked.
Well, you know, he wanted to see, would you get fined if he had, say he did a boiler job on Thursday?
Has he ever gotten fined in the past for not pulling a permit?
Well, because of the one-day inspection is what he was saying.
Well, there's gonna be times, like, if you call on Wednesdays and he's at a seminar or a conference or a training, and Kate Cod, he's not getting a permit that day. It's just not gonna happen.
But they could still drop off at the station anytime if you're not there?
Yeah, they get the mailbox at the front door, they drop off every day now. We don't do them the next day anyways, because we always contact the homeowner, and it's three, four, two weeks later. You know that.
Well, yeah, but this is, I, I just wanted to make sure, you know, I hadn't talked to you. I could say, yeah, it's okay, then he turns around and gets a fine.
Everybody's always done it that way, Bo, for, since I've been-
I know, but like you say, with the new things here and the change of the, her hours and the others.
They show up today without, with no one there, and they drop it in the mailbox. They all know they're dropping the mailbox, every day we check the mailbox.
I just wanted to make sure that part didn't change.
So, you know that.
Well, like I say, I, I can't say to him without asking you.
That he, that, you should've sent that individual to come speak to the chief.
He saw me Thursday, and, you know, he asked me, I said, if we get him coming in Monday, I says, I'll ask him Monday, make sure.
Chief said, go down, he's there Fridays, go see him.
Well, this way here, if anybody hears it, or hears a thing, they'll know, so.
Again, just confirming terminology from, from the communication. Any other questions from the board?
No, they could've answered, my, my biggest one was if we had, smoke detector had to be done because they had a closing coming on, but you answered that box as well, so.
Do it all the time.
Alright, Chief, thanks for your time. Alright, next item, policy adoption, health insurance opt-out program.
I brought this up at the last meeting, in that, uh, we had offered this once in two thousand and five and once in two thousand and thirteen, and I think it should be a permanent part of our, our programming, uh, related to employee benefits. And I believe there was consensus to move forward, we had our benefits fair last week, we advertised that this would be, uh, resurfacing again. I highlighted and read the changes that we would be making, um, and hopefully adapting the policy to, uh, make it a permanent policy, so. With that, looking for a vote to adopt the policy.
Did we discuss the, uh, minimum of two years, uh, in our?
It's, in terms of staying off, yes, that's, 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 we've done this twice in the last decade, and that's how it was done both times.
Okay. This is an opportunity to, in the end, save, save money if our folks can opt out. Any other, any questions from the board? Hearing nothing, I'll, uh, I'll take a motion. Entertaining a motion?
I make a motion to approve the health insurance opt-out program as is outlined in our, uh, the new, uh, the new, uh, policy language.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think we have our opt-out program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, uh, I am an old business, a vote to amend class-two license for George Ragsdale. I see you got your license on, uh, this is all revolved around the small car clinic.
Correct, if you recall, Mr. Shine was in here looking to utilize some of the Ragsdale space. As part of that, um, I think it was like when Woodbury brought up that, uh, um, you can't have two licenses for the same address facility. So, um, what we asked Mr. Ragsdale to do was submit a letter saying that he would withdraw his, uh, license for, uh, one of those two addresses and allow the small car clinic to move into that area. So, uh, you voted to allow Mr. Shine to move in pending this receipt of this letter. Uh, so he's okay to move forward now, and that's when, I think you asked John, you know, that, that vote allows him not, he didn't have to come back tonight, wait for this letter, and then come back, and then you vote. And then, uh, right, you need to vote on this to amend, uh, the license, current license for Mr. Ragsdale, as it's, uh, remains in effect until the end of this year.
I'll ask Rex Brooks, is he alright?
We should knock his hundred cars down to seventy.
He's retaining a seventy-car license, is that what you're saying?
Well, you don't have to.
He had a hundred, but I, I think we should knock it down to seventy.
He's not utilizing it, my only concern with that is, you know, why would we restrict it? If there's not room for it.
I think he has plenty, and, and did we issue that license to Javi when?
It would've been last November. So, like, in the annual licenses, you would've given it last fall, like, you gave all the other licenses, I, I mean, if you-
So, we're just shifting his license up, yeah, yeah.
So, he had a hundred between two sites, right?
Yeah, I don't care about George's, because the other property can handle a hundred if he had to.
Right.
Byron, you know, there's a repo we had up there, uh, which limits his space, but, that's-
But if you feel there's not enough room for the thirty for Mr. Shine and then for Mr. Ragsdale, keep a hundred between his-
I don't have a problem with that, I know that the, uh, building is rented, so the parking lot's gonna get cramped, and we talked about that when Javi was in here. I, I guess I do have a concern when, uh, when we put a stipulation on the license being on this property. This is just me, okay? And kind of show up there for sale prior to us getting this, which was a contingency.
Yeah, I know, it's that, oh, Mr. Shine, Mr. Shine had, his cars on the front.
He moved the ones from Lower Main Street up there.
So, I guess, you know, I mean, we're gonna move forward with it, but, you know, I think Javi needs to be well-informed that this board, uh, doesn't take that lightly.
Did he, um, was it, Brendan, was there one letter that came in, but it was incorrect? Okay, so I wonder if he dropped off a letter, assumed the letter was correct and moved forward? Because the, the first letter, um...
And it's okay, assumptions are assumptions, but...
We can just clear, we can just clear it up with Mr. Shine.
But I would appreciate it.
What was the first letter for, it was, it was, it was from Mr. Ragsdale, but said something different, right?
Yeah, it was, it wasn't exactly what you need, I remember what it said.
Yeah, I forget what it was.
That being said...
Yep, we can, we all know if I missed a shot.
This does comply.
Okay, so we're okay with...
But you're okay with the number, I know this is a important point, if you got it...
It, it's not gonna have a bearing, there'll never be a bearing, right?
He's not gonna utilize it anyway.
But, but just to be precise, does, does he, does, does Mr. Ragsdale then re, still retain a license for a hundred cars at three twenty-four?
He does.
Yeah, he does.
Right now, he's got zero cars up there, my concern is that if he activated it in the next six months, and he feels he can sell a hundred cars, or put a hundred cars in the inventory out there. Um, what, what benefit does the town have by restricting him only to seventy? You know, that's, I mean, it's likely not gonna happen that he's gonna utilize this hundred, you know, it's like, most likely, he wouldn't use the seventy anyway. Um, my concern is that, you know, when you're, when you're talking about restricting a certain number of cars, it's usually because of the amount of room that you have to fit those cars. Um, you know, you want businesses to do well, if he feels he can do a hundred, give him the approval to do a hundred, as long as he can fit the hundred.
Right.
So if there's no concern with the, the fitting of the hundred, I would just leave it at a hundred.
I was just, just out of respect to, to the original license, the, the wisdom of the original hundred car spread over, over, over...
Over two pieces of property.
I mean, do we, are we assuming that it could've handled a lot more, but that's, is that for us to assume?
I think it could've fit two, 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 three.
As a regular dealership, though, that, you know, that's...
I, I don't think the size is, is a concern, I understand what, we, we talked about, you know, this thirty, hundred seventy, and all that, but...
Just trying to be precise here, you know, and, and doing the math.
And that's a good point you both make, it's just...
If the board's not concerned with size, I recommend you move forward with a hundred, if you're concerned that there's not enough room there, we could ask Mr. Ragsdale to submit another letter, put this on another agenda. But then we're asking Mr. Shine not to go forward again, until you, until you do seventy, you know?
You guys know this property better than I do, if, if the, if a hundred is still comfortable in that, that three twenty-four location, I, I don't have a problem with that.
There's a whole fence in there, down behind Bayberry, it comes up the other side, Joe, it belongs to him, so, yeah, it's all hips.
Okay, that's all, yeah. Be part of them, how's a hundred cars, okay, I was just trying, doing the math, I saw, what, what happens at those thirty?
Alright, do we have a motion on this?
Motion to amend?
It's, uh, it would be a motion to, you need to vote to amend the, the current license, uh, for three twenty-two, three twenty-four, to relinquish the three twenty-two part, maintaining this three twenty-four license active.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, you know, to change the, the, the current class two license at three twenty-two, three twenty-four Main Street, for up to a hundred cars, to, to reflect, uh, uh, a, a new license of...
Just at three twenty-four?
Just at, have we already, have we already made a motion for the thirty, three twenty-two?
That's just, that's a Harry, that's a Harry's.
This is what Shine had his license right now, three twenty-two.
This one was subject to a letter from George saying he'd...
So the hundred is just three twenty-four?
Or to have Shine move forward, three twenty-two, Mr. Ragsdale had to withdraw his rights to the license, three twenty-two, and relinquish that part, and just keep three twenty-four. Cause right now, he has approval to do three twenty-two and three twenty-four.
But Shine already has the approval, he already has the number he...
What's, what's thirty?
Contingent on the letter.
Okay, then, then I will rephrase that. I propose modifying the, the class two license at three twenty-two to three twenty-four Main Street, to be, um, to, to reflect only a three twenty-four Main Street site for up to a hundred cars.
Correct. I, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
I recuse myself in that vote, please.
Okay. Selecton Woodbury recused himself from that vote. Alright, town administrator report, discussion, fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District budget.
Okay, thank you, I did put some information in your packet relative to this topic. Uh, the first thing I'd like to address is the computers. I'd like to do is, um, as you see in my letter, I, I talked about how they obviously still have a need for computer upgrade repair. And they have an opportunity to rediscuss their budget, rediscuss this need tomorrow night at their meeting, and most likely, they will be voting, uh, as part of this discussion, also voting their FY fifteen budget. Um, after having the opportunity to review it, to amend it, um, to add to it, to take away from it, uh, in an effort to continue this process, in which we'll eventually have a special town meeting. Possible override election, and if, again, fail at those two events, then we, we're looking at a district-wide meeting, and even possibly the state mandated budgets again. So, uh, what I'd like to do is, if you recall, we did not utilize all of our free cash in the capital plan. We had about eight hundred, what were you, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of free cash after FY thirteen last fall. Um, and what we did was, we spent four hundred thousand of that on balancing the FY fourteen budget, um, after the state mandated budget, that was put towards the seven hundred and one thousand dollar deficit. We also utilized twenty-five thousand of that free cash towards, um, fire department turnoff year, that left us at four hundred and twenty-five this past spring. At which time, we utilized, uh, a certain amount, I think it was two and a quarter, towards, um, snow and ice. And then that left a certain amount, two hundred or so, that, that we were able to use on capital, rather than using it all in capital, we used approximately eighty-three, I forget, the numbers off my head, but we have left one hundred and seventeen thousand, four oh six. Normally, we would've spent all of that money on capital, the board was reluctant to move forward with certain items, I think we bought the cruiser and, and some other stuff. Um, but what, with that, the board was thinking we should let, maybe let that roll over this year, we could be faced with another deficit in this fall. That would roll over, and, and at least give us some free cash that we could go towards another deficit, cause it's one-time revenue, right? It goes away once you use it, it's not recurring revenue. With that being said, in an effort to allow the district to move forward, help them get jump-started on this computer project, not have to wait through the whole course of the year, if we do have to go through the process of the district-wide meeting, if we do have to go through the process of the state, and we get into December. They, uh, if we had an upcoming special town meeting in the next couple of weeks, we were able to transfer this money towards them, they would be able to use that money the day after the town meeting, okay? That would help them get jump-started, I'm not sure if it's gonna help them do the full, they have like, I guess, this first phase is six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars worth, I'm not sure if it's gonna help them do all of that. I'm not sure if it's gonna help them do half of it, but with that money, and then maybe a portion of the money that East Brookfield has set aside, um, with any other money that they could find in their FY fourteen or current budget, um, they could at least get jump-started on that project. Obviously, that would help us, and that it wouldn't be part of, you know, the debt and capital assessment of the next coming budget, and then allows them to move forward right away. So I think that's a win-win for everybody, um, does it hurt us that that money's not there in the fall? Yeah, it's not gonna be there in the fall, it's gonna be gone, but at least it, it gets them going, um, and at least it gets it out of the operating budget, uh, part. So if we were to do that, I would like you guys to vote tonight, and then when we have a special town meeting, you'll put an article on the warrant for this transfer. And then I would notify the school committee and superintendent tomorrow during the day, in preparation for their meeting tomorrow night.
Questions? Questions from the board on that?
Uh, this comes off the five thirty-eight or the six thirty-two?
Six thirty-two, the five thirty-eight is our deficit on the operating budget, and I'll talk about that in a second, but...
So this comes from the...
Outside of that, they had a request, a capital request, for six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar project, approximately eighty-one percent is ours, and approximately nineteen percent is East Brookfield's. Um, East Brookfield set aside some free cash to do that, um, and then we, we chose to go through the process of the debt exclusion, because we didn't have, say, the five hundred and eight thousand dollars, or whatever it was, in free cash in total, because we had used it all already. And it was such a big number, the only way we could've funded that full project, that full request, was through the debt exclusion. We then put an article on the, a warrant, and a ballot question tied to, to that request, it failed, so they're, they still have that need, um, and they can't move forward. Um, so hopefully, this would, it's not, obviously, the full amount, the full five hundred that they need from us right now, but it's something, lets them maybe start phase one A, uh, or, or maybe through transfers that they find in their current budget, E and D is another, they have a form of free cash. Maybe they're able to come up with a full amount that way. Um, and that also would take that debt exclusion question off of the next override ballot, if we have one, which we most likely will have one, and I think that would certainly help the chances, um, doesn't hurt the chances, uh, by getting rid of that request. Uh, as you saw, it was, you know, overwhelmingly defeated, so, that's my recommendation to the board. Again, uh, I'd hate to see it added to the operating assessment, because they need it, and then we have a five hundred and thirty-eight plus six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar deficit. Uh, but, and, and then by doing that, I don't think that's in their best interests either, because that's not gonna get approved, and then we'll be waiting till December to even jump-start this project, they have a computer need now, this helps them get going now.
Yeah, contention pushes, pushes it off, so.
What guarantee do we have that they're gonna use this money for the computer?
The town meeting vote, town meeting vote would say it'll have to be used.
That's a lot, yeah.
What we did before was, when we've, when we've provided them money for capital, um, through the business manager, different business manager at the time, uh, we had a couple of requests a couple of years ago, video-wide streaming was one, Concrete Pad at Knox Trail, I forget the other one.
Big Street School, the, uh, Incon.
Yeah, intercom system, so, what they did was, they paid for it upfront, and we reimbursed them, so they paid their contractors, they submitted copies of invoices, payments, and then we would reimburse them, so.
Do we have an estimate of how many computers this money will buy?
There is a breakdown, uh, that was submitted, um, you know, I guess maybe if that, that information that wasn't submitted at the prior town meeting wasn't enough, if you'd like a specific request, um...
Well, if they, if they, if they were doing workstations, they, their average is about a thousand bucks.
He did have a number, whether it was like two sixty-six, or I can't, there, there was a, I'll have to dig up the, uh, the information that he had at town meeting, he did have, he did have a hand at a town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a hundred. Workstations are gonna be a bunch of switches.
Right.
I guess we wait and see what this money, you know, I, we'll get in the letter tomorrow, they'll talk to their IT person, they talk about it at their meeting tonight, and they decide, you know, okay, we're gonna break up this phase one into two parts, rather than buying two hundred and sixty-six workstations, we're gonna buy a hundred and tw- twenty, or whatever. So they'll, we won't know until they have a discussion, I think the first step is letting them know, we'd like to make this money available to them, to use towards that project. They need to figure out the best way to utilize that, in order to jump-set their project. They explain that to us, and then we go to town meeting, and we, you know, talk about that at, at the town meeting.
So we're protecting ourselves by specifying or having them pay upfront?
I just wanna make sure it goes to the kids' computers, which is like staff computers.
Sure.
Cause there's a need for the kids.
Right.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I, I, I'm still concerned about, just, obviously, we, 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 it's, we, we run up against this constantly, we've got a budget process, it's different for the district, and we, we try and work in, with them and make overtures, and, and ask to, to sit down with them. But th- this could be made available, but they, but they still could, they could still come back and, and say, we want it, it, we, you still wanna go ahead with the, with that large in, infusion of, of cash. That, that they could still stick with their original number, just, you know, take the one seventeen off of that, or do we say, and if, if they're gonna go forward with, still wanna go forward with, with the, the, the original override, or, excuse me, um, debt exclusion amount? Where's our one hundred and seventeen thousand at?
Well, John, if they, if they take the one seventeen, plus let's say, a certain portion of the money that East Brookfield put aside, which meant, they're twenty percent, and our one seventeen is eighty percent, so they come up with, like, I think it's twenty-six or twenty-nine thousand. So that's one forty-six, if they take that off the six thirty-two, and they come back with a request for four ninety, um, I don't think it's gonna pass. So, I think they know that, it's not in their best interest to apply that number, lower that debt exclusion number, if they have an override request for five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and then on top of that, which is the same number they had last time, and on top of that, they have a debt exclusion for four ninety. They both failed thirteen hundred to eighteen, eight hundred, they're not, it's not in their best interest to do that, because they're not gonna pass, I think they know that, the, the, the fact that they failed overwhelmingly. So therefore, now they're looking to, again, the fall, district-wide meeting, and if that failed again, then you're looking at a state coming in December first. So they're talking six months from now, before they're able to start this computer project, where they could start July first, if they would do something this way, okay? The other thing is, my, my proposal tonight to you would be to set the date, open the town meeting warrant tonight, we set a date, uh, two-plus weeks out, after tomorrow night's vote. Then on Thursday, I'd like to see if you guys would be willing to meet, you know, and get three of you that morning to close the warrant, uh, based on the number that they vote tomorrow night. So, if they don't do something that makes sense for you, then you could, you know, close that. The, 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 one of the problems we have with this whole process is the timeframe, we wanna make sure we can shorten it, if you recall, last December, we didn't have time to ask for an override for our services, once we were mandated a seven hundred and one thousand dollar budget. So, what I'd like to do is move, sort of timeline, I'm just kinda jumping ahead three sheets here, but, they have, um, their meeting Tuesday night. Uh, I would like you guys to set the special town meeting for Thursday, uh, June twenty-sixth, we have, we have fourteen days to notify the town clerk, or I'm sorry, fourteen days, once you notify the town clerk to hold a special town meeting. Okay, so you notify her Thursday morning, she could have the, 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 uh, warrant posted Thursday night, two weeks from now, you would have a, a special town meeting, and you would vote on the budget that they give you back. And I'd add an article for this transfer to that warrant, okay, so you have two art, two articles on that warrant, okay? Uh, if the article for the free cash passed, they're able to move forward with the computers. Whatever the budget comes back at, if it comes back at five thirty-eight, it comes back more, it comes back less, you're gonna have an override on that, most likely. But it takes the debt exclusion question off the table, they can move forward and just have that discussion, because now they, they're able to start their project in some way, that's the thinking, okay?
And again, the chairman of the school committee has this letter.
No, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
He'll have this letter.
They'll have it tomorrow, in preparation for, I haven't said it yet, they'll have it in preparation for tomorrow night's meeting, okay? They'll have a discussion on the budget, they're gonna have a discussion on the computers, then they'll have their votes. The concern here, John, is that they have five thirty-eight, six thirty-two, if it comes back combined, and we have an operating assessment now, it's one point one million dollar deficit for us, you know, we're, you're, it's not gonna pass, right? I mean, I think we can all agree on that, you'll, you'll set the question at town meeting, and you'll set the question on the ballot, we'll have that ballot in, uh, August or September, and it'll fail, and then we'll be at district-wide meeting in October, and we'll roll the dice then, and then we'll have the district, uh, then we'll have the state coming in. So, you know, obviously, you know what one point one million dollars deficit means to us, after we just cut five hundred, you know, cutting another million, so, there's kind of multiple reasons here. Hopefully, it's a win-win for everybody, at least it gets them going, um, and then we don't have that, uh, attached to the overall operating assessment.
Again, it's just trying to pro, provide a creative, creative idea to mitigate, to, to mitigate the risk of, of going ahead, you know, without, you know, trying to alter that, that debt exclusion number.
I think if we do nothing, then we're, we're, you know, I don't know.
With the bigger number.
I'm concerned about what happens going on, I mean, it's, you know, it's possible.
You know, it makes a lot of sense to me, and I think it's, it's a example of, of the kind of common sense and, and, and approach that we've been advocating, you know, we've... Unfortunately, though, we, you know, we, we, we seem to see it one way, and, and the school committee sees it another, another, at least not enough people in the school committee see it in, in, you know, in a win-win way, or ways to, to move both the, the, the town and the district, uh, forward together. I mean, I, you know, I, I, I made a case for please, you know, looking, you know, look, taking another look at your budget, and, um, being creative, and coming back to some of the ideas that we've, we've had in, in, and, in, in the years past, at the last school committee meeting, and, and, you know, those of you who read about it, was it kind of, though not personal, it was a dressing down of, of the select board. I mean, I really feel like that was, I feel like we're the ones reaching out, and I, and I think this is good, I think it's a, it's a good, it's a show of good faith, which I think, you know, we need to continue offering, but it, but, you know, it's, we, we don't have any control how it's received there.
Right, well, well, all we can do is continue to try and let them, and let them vote as they wanna see, uh, see, see fit on, on this, but we're trying to come to a solution that, uh, is a win-win for everybody, so...
I guess what I mean by win-win is, it, it, it lessens the, the lessens the chance that we're gonna have a devastating cut tied to the computer purchase, right? And also lets them move forward first, so that's, there's a, there's a compromise there, they may not get the full amount, we're not in jeopardy of, of being impacted by, by a deficit of this magnitude, you know, stuff to do with the other one, and we'll talk about that next, but, um, so, it's a slight win, slight win, I guess, or a slight, you know...
I guess, I guess you gotta look at it this way, through the chair. Last year, we got real creative, okay, and diverted slaughter. This year, we're getting creative, and you're right, John, we got taken to task, I can only wish that other people besides this board took the initiative, become creative. But that being said, I think this makes sense to at least get something out there, and maybe open line of communications, quote, maybe we got it right, I don't know.
And, and to tell you the truth, it's, it's, it, you're, you're right, I mean, I, I hope they'd see that, that delays on, on moving on tech, forward on technology is just gonna result in a greater exodus from the district. It was, it was, you know, it was sort of bad public relations, the way that it all came out, and I, I, for the town to be stepping forward and saying, you know, we, we recognize the need, and we're gonna, the last free cash we have, we're, we're prepared to, to assist in that regard, I think that's a, a message, I think that, that will hopefully be heard outside the district as well.
If there are no other concerns about this one item, I'd like to, anyone, any other questions, I'd like to put this up to a vote, and have a motion, please.
I've been looking for a vote to ask that, you guys asked me to send a letter to the school committee superintendent, uh, offering, uh, an, an article at the town meeting coming up, social town meeting, for one hundred and seventeen thousand, actually, four oh six, one seventeen, four oh six, to be put towards the capital, uh, purchase upgrade.
So moved. Excellent, no motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We can get this letter out to, uh...
Can we do it tonight? I can only hope. Um, so the second part of that, um, is related to the FY fifteen budget, so, the operating assessment. So I did a draft letter for your review, hopefully explaining to you as well as what I'd be using as tools to explain to them, um, our request or, again, our plea to hopefully move forward with, um, a budget that is, you know, that, that they can live with, and obviously a budget that, that doesn't devastate the town. So, if you've been reading, uh, you, you, you may have seen that through the process of the development of the state budget, moving from the governor to the house to the senate. The senate has proposed a ninety percent reimbursement of regional transportation aid, okay? That's significant. Um, and we're being told to, to plan on that number. With that being said, the, uh, the regional school district budget, when they were, carried their revenue piece for regional school district transportation reimbursement under chapter seventy-one, they only used a seventy percent reimbursement rate. So this number changes if they utilize the senate's number from forty-seven, one thousand five hundred to six hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven, or a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in additional revenue that could be applied to the district's FY fifteen budget. So I'm asking you to vote again, to have me draft this letter, send it to them, pleading to them to utilize this number in their budget. That would help lower the assessments to the towns, um, by that hundred and forty-five thousand dollars combined. They wouldn't have to make any cuts to their budget, it wouldn't affect classroom size, it wouldn't affect program, they wouldn't have to change one penny on the expense side of their budget. All they would do is add a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in new revenue that's being proposed from the state. By doing that, it means the amount that they need from the towns is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars less, okay? So what that would mean is our deficit would approximately go from five hundred and thirty-eight thousand down to a hundred and eighteen thou- uh, down, a hundred and eighty, which, huh, down a hundred and eighteen thousand, yeah. Down a hundred and eighteen thousand, which is eighty-one percent of that one forty-five, leaving us a deficit of four hundred and nineteen thousand, okay? Four hundred and twenty thousand above. Uh, and then, on top of that, asking them to look at further items in their FY fifteen budget at, on that four twenty for us, to see if they could keep going a little bit, to try and get to the minimum local contribution only, which is about two hundred and fifty-two thousand for us, and then that would be an override question that we would ask for. We could defend that number because it's the minimum required by the state. You now take out the debt exclusion question as well, um, and you, and that's the only request that you would have for the, for them.
To the chair, uh, this makes perfect sense. It, it's really a no-brainer. So, yeah, I make a motion, uh, to vote to authorize Adam to send the district eleven.
I have a, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just to, to clarify, and that goes back to, we originally decided when we, when we, when we were looking at the school committee request, that we were not gonna include the minimum increase in, why, why wasn't the minimum increase in, 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 in the original?
It was not increased because we didn't have a chance last year to ask for the override for the seven hundred and one thousand.
That was it, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, they actually, the minimum local contribution reference actually refers back to FY, back to the spring of two thousand and thirteen, when they asked for a three point three million dollar budget over the previous year, which was thirty-five percent. And then you guys proposed articles and ballot questions. What you did was you said, we'll contribute in the override, the minimum local contribution amount. Everything else above that, uh, will be additional local. And as, as the picking away eventually happened, and the compromise budget eventually came, and the mandate budget came from the state, that number was a seven hundred and one thousand dollar increase over the previous year, okay? Above and beyond the minimum local. So we, 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 we had to suck up the minimum local, and then we had a seven hundred and one thousand dollar deficit, okay? Cause we did have some two and a half increase last year, that went towards that, that minimum local. The seven hundred and one thousand, you had, didn't have an opportunity to request. So when they came forward with this request this year, it was five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars la- over last year. So combine that with a seven hundred and one thousand dollar deficit, moving forward to a subsequent fiscal year, you essentially had a one point two million dollar deficit related to the school's budget, okay? Um, that being said, you then decided to absorb that seven hundred and one. However, every penny above this year is gonna be part of the override, and that's how the five hundred and thirty-eight came. So now what we're saying is, okay, again, we'll absorb some of that in an effort to compromise. You're killing us over here, you know, we're making cuts and reductions in services, and we don't see you asking for zero, so would you at least only ask for the minimum local? In order to do that, apply this one hundred and forty-five thousand dollar in additional money from the regional transportation reimbursement aid, and then find another two hundred or so thousand to get it down to just the minimum local. And then we'll ask for an override for that. If the override doesn't pass on that, we go to the district-wide meeting, doesn't pass that, we gotta suck up that.
Yeah, and so, and then these other items.
But, but, just, well, there's one, one final thought is that, if you were gonna, if, it, it makes it, that, that's a number I think that the board could then defend. The board could then speak up at town meetings and say, listen, we've gotten this down to the minimum local only. Voters, town meeting voters in the public, you know, it's not the one point two million dollars that requested that, that deficit. We've absorbed, you know, almost, you know, eight hundred thousand of that or plus. The school's gonna absorb a couple hundred thousand of that. The only thing they're gonna ask for now is two hundred and fifty-two thousand. That helps you, I think it helps increase the chances of a, a request for additional tax levy, because it's the minimum that you can ask for.
And, and these other ideas you've mentioned is, in the email, are real numbers too. I mean, uh, some of them are decisions they've already made, and there's gotta be savings there associated with it, and, and we've discussed that with members of the school committee here in our audience. So, uh, hopefully, they'll, they'll, uh, they'll reconsider that. Uh, okay, so we have a motion. Did I have, do we have a second? We have a second? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Off goes this letter, tonight.
So, the, the next thing I wanna do then, um, that completes eight A, so eight B. So if you have, my timeline is the next sheet in front of you. Um, it talks about, um, what's taking place this week. With the June ninth, the June tenth, and the June eleventh, which actually, I think I'll change to June twelfth, but. So tonight, what I'd like you to do is set the special town meeting date for June twenty-sixth, Thursday night, seven PM. Open the town meeting warrant, send these letters out tonight. School committee reviews them tomorrow at their meeting, they may take their votes on the budget. They notify us on Wednesday, allows me to draft a warrant. Thursday morning, I would ask if I could get three members to come Monday morning, nine o'clock, close the warrant, set it with those articles. I hand it over to town clerk, she has it posted, minimum fourteen days later, which would be June twenty-sixth, but because it's later in the day, we comply with the forty, fourteen-day timeline. June twenty-sixth, you'd have those articles voted on. If they failed, you'd have a meeting on June twenty-sixth, that same night. I'll post a board of selection meeting the same night as the town meeting. Uh, at the end of the meeting, you vote, your board would convene based on the results of that meeting, um, and then vote to set, uh, the election date and the override questions, and then I'd notify the town clerk the following Monday morning. And then forty-five days out is the minimum at which you could hold a special election. That would be August nineteenth. If the override failed, then, uh, the district-wide meeting would have, the, I'm sorry, the school committee would have to convene, talk about their budget again, notify us of a date of a district-wide meeting, at least fourteen days, advertise that meeting. I, uh, carried, um, a thirty-day timeline for them to do that, to meet, advertise, uh, uh, meet, discuss the budget, notify the paper fourteen days later, have a district-wide meeting, a possible date of Saturday, September twentieth. If the district-wide meeting failed, then you'd be left with the di- the state coming in. There's a different timeline that's unknown at this point, until you work with the state on that, as you saw last year. If the district-wide meeting passed, then I would again would hold, have the board convene at that meeting. I'd post a special board of selection meeting at that district-wide meeting. You would then set another election date based on whatever the budget was, uh, that passed at that district-wide meeting. I'd notify the town clerk, and then move forward with that forty-five-day minimum. You could have a special election in November eleventh, special town meeting in reaction to that election, November twentieth. A tax hearing, notify DOR of our tax rate, have them approve the tax rate, tax bills out mid-December, comply with the December thirty-first timeline. So, this is potential, none of these dates are final, obviously, they're all taking votes, but this is, the one thing that we would be able to do here, if you look at the bottom, is the forty-five-day minimum. We did not have time to do that last year, okay? So, the thing, my concern is that whatever happens at the district-wide meeting, you are tied to based on the statute. So if there's ten people show up at that district-wide meeting, and six of them vote to give them two million dollars, and four of them vote no, you're stuck with that, you know, that amount of money. And you need to ask for an override for that, whatever, I'm just throwing it behind the socks. But, it gives us the time to react to whatever potential vote occurs at the district-wide meeting. Last year, we did not have time to do that, the state notified us on November eighteenth. Um, we did not have forty-five days to have an election, have a town meeting, set the tax rate based on that vote. In this qu- in this case, by me pushing you guys tonight, and then continuing to push these timelines, having you meet at the, when these votes occur, trying to save us forty-five days at the end of the year to have time for an election, which we didn't last year. Learn, learn, live and learn, right? So, um, first question then would be, is it possible for you guys, would you guys be willing to have just a special meeting, to post it down here, to have up to three people, or a minimum of three people, vote to close the warrant based on the numbers that are provided to us after tomorrow night's vote on Wednesday? I've had a discussion with the superintendent and the business manager that if there is a vote on Tuesday night, they could get me those, that information on Wednesday, okay? Um, I would post the meeting tomorrow morning before nine o'clock, so we comply with the forty-eight-hour timeline. Understood? So I know I could get Bo. He's in town. Thursday morning, nine o'clock.
Yeah, it could be today.
Tony?
Yeah.
Gary and Chris, you know, your car, tied to the car.
Thursday, I'm in town late in the morning anyways.
Thursday you could do, Thursday, and then John and Chris.
It's just Thursday, the twenty-sixth, what time?
Thursday, twenty-sixth at nine AM, right here. I would have a special meeting and post it tomorrow.
Sounds like you've got enough behind available.
Uh, uh, so at least, somewhere between three and five, okay? So, um, now some of you may go to the m- meeting tomorrow night, so you may have that information already in, in your, in your brain when you come. Whatever information I get on Wednesday, I'll forward to you, and you'll have that discussion on Thursday. Are there concerns with that process? Again, that saves us from having a meeting and then notifying the town clerk, it's gonna save you a week. I mean, e- every day is valuable here, every day you push out means at the end of the day, if the district-wide meeting vote occurs and you don't have time, you're gonna have a special time meeting in December to cut your budget or use up your free cash like you did last time. You still may have to do that anyway if the override doesn't pass, but at least you get another crack.
At least we get another shot at it.
Think so.
So, so, what I need is a vote to, remember you tonight, is to set a special time meeting date, seven o'clock, uh, June twenty-sixth, town hall. Open the town meeting warrant, and then we need to go on Thursday to close and set the warrant.
All right, do I have a motion on the, uh, send the, uh, special election date?
Town meeting.
Yeah. Town meeting date, sorry.
Make a motion to set the special town meeting date as June twenty-sixth. Is that aligned by now?
Seven PM here at the town hall. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now you need another vote to open the town meeting warrant. Special time meeting warrant, open the town, special time meeting warrant.
Motion to open the special town meeting warrant.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so you'll post all those meetings, Adam?
I will, I'm gonna have one more thing on that, um. Okay, um. Town services. So, how does the board feel? What are they, what's, what should the board do? Because you have, you know, the four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar override for town services failed. Past the time you failed. So you're gonna have another special town meeting for the school budget. I'm saying this is an option, I'm not saying for or against it. You have an opportunity again to put an article on, the special time meeting is coming up on that night, to have a certain line item or an article for certain town services like we did last time, that's contingent upon an override. And then based on that vote that happens, you know, when you set the election date, you then have a ballot based on, if, uh, on that number. So, last, obviously, last ballot, we had three articles. You had one for the town services, one for the school services, uh, operating assessment, and then one for the debt exclusion. If you did not ask again for town services, and the school committee went forward with not asking for the debt exclusion, you would have one article, hopefully at a lo- lower number, at an election, forty-five days at least after this town, special town meeting, just for that. Obviously, that's, better's the chances of that passing. However, I know some of you feel strongly about the services that we requested, the needs. We talked about the fire department here tonight, there's other things in there. Mr. Schenneth is continually trying to raise money for the parks and rec department, police overtime. We had a discussion regarding that as it related to the five K road race. There's the senior center project, there's the, the day at town hall, there's the library. The library, we, we, we issued seven layoff notices last week to seven people. One of the persons had been there for forty years, okay? Um, so, I guess I'm asking the question to the board, does the board have any appetite for another question on a special time meeting? You don't have to vote on it tonight, cause you're gonna set the town special time meeting warrant on Thursday morning, but you're gonna have, have an opportunity to discuss it tonight. Um, and I can draft an article between now and then, just as I'm gonna have to draft a school article, based on whatever they do tomorrow night. So Wednesday's gonna be a busy day for me. Does the board wanna, there's pros and cons. Obviously, I think you increase your chances of the schools override passing if you don't have the town services. If you don't ask for the town services again, it only failed by forty-five votes, which is twenty-three swing, swing votes. Those things are gone, and they're coming back before July first, okay? So, there's pros and cons. Um, uh, you know, if you have questions in terms of that, in terms of, um, what those services were, I can let you know those. But this is, this is gonna be your decision in terms of what you wanna do, um, in terms of the town's general government services based on what you heard all spring from department managers, what the consequences of the failed override have been, and by the actual vote that occurred that night and how close it was. What does the board wanna do with that, if anything? If not, that's fine, I'll draft a warrant that doesn't have that. If you wanna move forward with the same request, um, or a different request, alter it somewhat. I could draft something for that too, but, uh, I'll leave that for you guys to discuss.
Personally, I've, I've, I'm concerned, um, a- as a board that we were, we were, we laid out the, the, the services that would be affected with the override, and the override wasn't, uh, failed to pass. So, um, I'm, I'm concerned just the way, as a board, how we perceived if we just went back again and asked for it again because we had lost by forty-one votes. But I also think that if we do do it, that I've heard from a few folks, I mean, we should à la carte these requests. And that there may have been some that were more palatable to the voters than others. So that we, that they'd be individual requests that could go up or down, um, with the vote. It would add more articles on, we don't, we, we, you know, we hate our three-hour meetings, but.
Probably a ballot question, you know?
Right.
Well, I think what Tony says, he wants to break it down.
Yeah, if you saw, there could be seven ballot questions instead of, instead of.
Exactly. I, I can tell you this, is, you know, and, and say it's forty-five, it could be a million multiple. But I can tell you, once you decimate the town services, they are gone forever. And if you think that, that fire chief doesn't deserve the training, okay, to put yourself in that position, then there's something wrong if you believe that's right. And I'll personally, personally knock on doors to sell the town, and if the school comes back with this, I'll be the biggest opponent for them. Because it means they're working together and it's time to move forward. But to sit here and say that those town services we got are unimportant, that's bull. So that's where I stand, I think we take another shot at it.
Let me just add that to that. The, I've also heard that, you know, we also heard from the school committee, that they were concerned that we didn't combine it all into one override. So, one question is, do you ask for town services again as part of the net, uh, next election, in next town meeting warrant? The second question's gonna be, what's the structure of that if you decide to say yes? So Tony's thinking that there may have been, you know, of the seven things requested, people may have been in favor of some of them and not all of them, and therefore, those would have passed, but they were hurt because of others. Then you have, I mean, you talk to ten people, you're gonna get ten different.
Exactly.
Yeah, you know, statements, so at the end of the day, I, I, I caution you in terms of, you know, I talked to one person at Duncan's, and this is what he said. You know, you need to think of it from a policy standpoint, or from an impact standpoint to the town, what you think the best possible thing is to move forward in both of the school and in terms of the town. So, one is, do you ask for town services? Yes or no? Do you ask for some of them, not all, yes or no? And then, yes or no, do we combine that all into one override question for school, you know, joint services, school and town? Uh, or do you separate everything, and it's one for the school, and it's one for the senior center, and it's one for the fire department, it's one for parks and rec, it's one for police overtime, da, 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 da. So those are some questions that you need to think about and have some discussion now, now on.
And, and again, uh, the question with the override is not a new question.
And, and again, uh, the question with the override is not a new question. There have been complaints about override questions in the past being lumped together. So this is not a flavor of the month because of the last vote, it's something that's been discussed before. So, um, uh, to me, it would just be a way of mitigating the all or nothing situation. And if we get up there and, and we work as a team on, on, and, and we work together with the school on theirs, I, I got no issue standing up and, and. And promoting, you know, supporting their, their override at the meeting as well.
Well, and some of you may be thinking, let's wait till tomorrow night, see what their votes are before we actually have a consensus moving forward, that's fine too. I understand that their vote may have an impact in terms of what you decide, uh, what, what you should ask for, but, but that's, you know, if you're, you know. You're not gonna have another opportunity to do that.
So we can make this vote for this?
Yeah, I, I would say, your earliest opportunity to have a vote on town services would be at the same time you vote on the school services. And capital on June twenty-sixth. If you didn't on that night, their district wide meeting is not gonna have an article for town services, it's a district wide meeting for school budget only. You would have to set another special town meeting if you wanna do anything for the town, if you didn't do it at this one. You're gonna have one in December anyway, because you're gonna have, once you get the school budget. Um, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna, once the, that budget's finalized, I, you know, um, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a fall special time meeting, you always. So, by that point, six months through the year, the library's already been closed, those people have already been laid off, you're not gonna take them back. I, I mean, it's gonna be very difficult.
It's, it's that, August nineteenth would be an override, could be the override vote for addition for returning sound.
School committee votes tomorrow night, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, this is saying, this is a possible scenario, they come in, they vote the same number, you know, this is what we need. We're not lowering anything, this is what we need, or someone brings up and says, I'd like to change it, we need to nee- we need to lower it. But they don't get five votes to lower it, they only get four, then you s- then you get the same budget back, okay? And then, you get that at a special town meeting, you're gonna have an article on the special time meeting warrant. That's for that money, and you draft that warrant article contingent upon an override. And then you have to set an override out forty-five days after that special time meeting. If that vote passes, if the vote pa- doesn't pass, then you get rid of, and then you don't move forward and, you know, then there's a, a district wide meeting, early, a lot earlier, I guess. If it passes and it's contingent upon an override, which is what happened last year, cause there's no, there's no, there's no risk there, it's tied to the override, right? So people vote for it. Just like they did at this town meeting, right? So, if it then fails, um, then you go for the district wide meeting again, but.
I guess, I'm sorry, I didn't ask my question properly, uh, August nineteenth would, would be the same election where we could, we could present. Um, override options for restoring town services.
Correct, but it needs to be tied to the appropriation, which would have to take place at the special time meeting.
Yes, okay, but I'm saying, you, you're not gonna reverse what we've done sooner than. You're not gonna reverse the, the, the cuts effective with the FY fifteen budget until, until that override vote in, in August.
Right, if August nineteenth comes around and you, and that override passes and there's thirty thousand dollars in there for the FY fifteen budget for training.
If we go back there.
He can go back.
Or in the case of library, nobody gets rehired.
Though, I mean. Uh, you could, oh yeah, August nineteenth.
Because it doesn't change the outcome as of today.
The, the longer you, like, my point, my earlier statement, I, I, I incorrectly stated, I wouldn't take, that we wouldn't take them back. If it was, if it wasn't until December, the funding came through in December based on this. My point was that at that point, you let them off in June, money's restored in December. People have already laid off, they probably already found another jobs by then. So that was, that was my point, um, that if you could take people back, you would, if it made sense, if the funding was there and they were available, right? If they weren't available, then you advertise, you, you advertise other people.
Okay, so we have the school meeting tomorrow night and then we'll meet Thursday and we'll establish the, uh. The, uh, based on that partially, we'll sta- we'll establish the articles for the special town meeting. So consider, do some heavy soul searching and decide, you know, how, if you want to represent it and how you wanna represent it.
So look at that.
What's the difference whether it was tonight or whether it's tomorrow night?
Depending if the school comes back with a five thirty-eight.
So, so the town services that we fought over.
Yep.
And came with a forty-five, now you're saying those are unimportant because we may be faced with a five thirty-eight again? I'm a little confused.
So you're, you're, you're discussing possibly moving forward tonight and saying, let's, let's do it, you don't have to, is my point, you don't have to.
We don't have, but you gotta either commit that the town services are important. Or you sit here tonight and say those aren't important because based on what's gonna happen. You can't fight for the amount of fight we had and put Chief Parsons, Chief Darren, uh, Mary Brany, uh. Who else was here that night, I'm trying to think, and say that all their work is now unimportant because. Thank you, Mary. I don't get it, guys, I just don't get how we can sit here tonight and say, well, it was a shot, it's not important. It just baffles me.
What I don't wanna see happen is just to shove that, that same override question back out there, because then people are gonna say, you know, we spoke, we spoke once.
You can rephrase it any way you want, and, and Tony made some good point. But I'm saying, do you sit here tonight and say, no, I, I don't get it, I just don't get it.
I'm not sure you're saying, saying no.
You can't fight as hard as we fought.
Gary's saying is that he, 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 he's trying to plead to you guys to make, make sense of it, that if you asked for it before, you felt it was important, why wouldn't you ask for it again? So the only discussion we should be having is just how we structure the questions.
Exactly, you're right, and, and that's the whole point of this, i- is. Geez, you can't go through that whole process.
Well, it's, it's not about what the effort we put in, it's about what, it's about what the vote's at.
Okay, forty-five votes, John, and I can walk you to forty-five people who didn't understand.
If it was one vote, we'd still have the same result.
I mean, unfortunately, you're the one that said you thought there was a hundred thousand flock, I mean, there isn't. And, and we have to be firm and committed to what we're doing.
That was something based on a principle that I thought was worth defending at, at almost any price. But, you know, that lost, I, I, and that lost and we're, we're back to the overriding, the question, giving people another chance.
I just can't.
Well, I couldn't see doing it with, without restructuring it, I mean, and I think that's.
I don't have an issue, I'm just saying, is, is you have to be committed to these employees that we put through this. And, and if we're committed at that point, why would you not be committed today? I, I guess that's my hangup, is you can't just say, geez, the sun's shining today, I think it's a great day and it got a little cloudy, maybe the day turned bad. I don't know.
Well, you know, we all value the commitments people made, but, but our, but our first commitment is, is to the voters, to the residents, I mean, and, and to, to look at the vote. And see what we think it says and whether or not, based on the feedback we've received, whether or not that's, you know, that they need to be given another opportunity, that they would like another opportunity. We certainly heard them and, and, and those cuts are gonna be effective July first. Uh, I, I, it was, you know, I wish, uh, that we had, you know, structured differently and I would be inclined to. We don't, so.
Okay, what's the will of the board, you wanna, uh, make that decision tonight?
You want me to draft?
Well, I, I think we need some, some options.
Well, what I would do, I mean, well, I need some guidance, you know, I can, I have things prepared for Thursday morning, but. Um, if you want, you know, the easiest thing, if you're talking about just à la carte, is I take the question. That we are the article, we had a town meeting article, it had seven or eight different departments, police, fire, library. But then it also had assessors and it had accounting and it had everybody that had, you know, was losing their day at Town Hall, it was broken down by department. You had senior center, you had parks and rec, so I could take all of those out and make them all a separate question. I could, and then you'd have a, a separate article on the town meeting warrant. Actually, I take it back, yeah, you'd have a special, uh, you'd have one question, the article from the town meeting could say the same. Okay, cause they're all contingent upon an override, and then you go to the override ballot question and then you break them out. So, for the ballot then, do I break out every single one? Do you wanna do good public safety, do you wanna do public works, do you wanna do?
That would be the.
The town, the general government services at Town Hall, so.
Town Hall services, public safety.
Combine accounting, treasurer, town clerk, town administrator, and all those into one, library one, senior center one, parks and rec one.
Yeah, sort of cultural, so like.
You'd be down to like five instead of like ten, twelve.
I, I, I don't wanna be concerned about questions because of the, you know, the questions at ballot, I also don't want forty questions on the ballot either.
I could see four groupings there.
Okay, so I, I'll, I'll group them based on relativity.
Yeah, I guess we're doing this, we're doing this because the, because of the. Because of the closest of the, of, of the vote.
Yeah, police, fire, and highway can use as one.
Alright, so.
And we're breaking it, that'll be.
So I'll draft a special time meeting warrant and, and also a ballot question, well, the ballot questions are, you don't need to, you're not gonna vote on those. Until after the, until after the town meeting, okay, but at least I gave you an idea what they would look like.
And, and that's my hope.
Okay, so I'll draft, uh, that for Thursday. Thank you for that discussion, that's all, all I have on that. You want the other one, Mr. Chairman, or?
The, how about the, the chapter seventy mobilization, was there any other discussion on that, I think we beat that to death? Uh, the, uh, chapter seventy mobilization update?
Uh, so just some feedback that I've received since, and, uh, I did receive just calls and emails from folks at other towns. Just from the sheer fact that there was an article in the paper the next morning, which was a positive sign. Uh, so Brendan's been working diligently to get all of our letters out, um, the, uh, what I'd like to do. Oh, one of the things that, that came up last week was, if you recall in the paper, there was also discussion at, in Quavon with those five towns. And Jeff Wilson from Mass Department of Ed and, and I think Senator Brewer and Representative Goby were there as well. Um, I've reached out to Central Mass Planning Commission, actually Central Mass Planning Commission reached out to me. I was at a meeting on Friday at the Economic Development Seminar that we put on, and we discussed, uh, possible grant funding that they have. You recall the DLTA funding, we used that to do the economic development project called the Central Thirteen. Where we looked at different priority development areas and preservation areas in each of these thirteen towns, and then. Uh, Rural Eleven did theirs and one forty-six blocks of Valley did theirs, and now we're looking at those even at another greater significant state level. That same funding, um, which also come, comes out of the same pool of funds as the CIC grants. We could probably tap into some of that and have, uh, some actual analysis done as part of our process in terms of evaluating chapter seventy. So, um, you know, basically put something together that then chapters, uh, that the State Department of Ed could, could use. We know that they're understaffed, as every other, you know, every other department is, but they're, they're, they have limited resources as well, they're dealing with, you know, three hundred fifty-one towns. And, uh, in the state in terms of trying to figure out, um, funding, so maybe if we. First step is get the letters out, second step is collect the names, third step is set up a meeting, um, get some discussion. Have Central Mass Planning Commission there, MMA there, and also, um, there's a group called the Abrams Group, which I'd like to invent there. You know, the state gurus on chapter seventy, have everybody there, discuss a possible project in which we could hire a consultant to do some evaluation in terms of chapter seventy. In terms of how it's impacting us, and then use that as a tool to then meet with the Department of Education. And then with our legislature's support, hopefully make some changes, uh, as it relates to, uh, the formula.
That input you've been getting from other towns has been positive that they like what they're hearing, um.
It wasn't like a, you know, fifty people, it was just a couple, but yeah, it was definitely, you know, um. It was brought up at that session I was at, there were a couple legislators there and we were talking about economic development, but chapter seventy came up. You had, it was kinda like ask the legislator, and that was the primary focus was from different folks in the audience, from Barry and Hardwood and others. Talking about the problems that regional school districts are having with the mandated, you know, chapter, chapter seventy. And chapter seventy basically says with the formula, as long as they're not making that minimum local contribution more than your two and a half percent, they can go right there. And that's what's happening for us, you know, we had two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars in additional prop two and a half last year. And school district minimum local went up two hundred fifty-two, that left us twenty thousand dollars to spread over an eight million dollar budget. You know, it's just, there's no way you can do it, uh, without making cuts on our side, right? So, um, so I, I, I think you're gonna find that once this process gets going, they'll, it'll build up some momentum pretty quickly.
So was the feedback suggesting, as you did get, suggested we need to provide them with, with a little, uh. Better picture of just the impact it's having on the town.
Nope, nope, I think what we're, what, uh, what we're going towards is, you know, and I mentioned this to Tony earlier on. I just wanna set a letter out and say, hey, do you have the same concerns I have, and they say yes, and then, okay, great. Now, you know, I wanna go through the process of, let's put some actions in play, so. The, the response that I've gotten from other communities and other people I run to has been more like, whatever you need, you got a meeting, I'll be there. You want me to help you write something, I'll be there, you know, those ki- those kinds of, that's the kind of feedback I've had.
So you're, you're, these are your ideas, how to, how to sort of feed this process?
Right, mine is, and some other people that have approached me and, and, you know, certain funding resources out there and I know there's certain people out there tied to this issue. And then it would basically, you know, need the towns to just support that and push it up and move it up.
Uh, uh, this workshop, roundtable, we gotta have some kind of plan of action.
Right.
Other than a typical letter that goes to, to representatives to. Alright, I read the letter, it's, uh. Okay, any que- questions on that? Next, uh, item on the agenda is future meetings, uh, for workshops, uh, June sixteenth workshop.
Right, yeah, a couple things I have on there, that, obviously the fishing game lease for the senior center. Uh, that, based on the fact that the override failed, we need to discuss that with them, I actually, they've been reaching out to me, I've actually had preliminary discussions a couple of months ago. Um, actually I put aside my notes, so please don't ask me any questions about what those discussions were, but now that the override's failed, I need to get back onto that. And get you something for Monday.
So as you read it out June thirtieth, does it?
Correct, correct, so we need to do some kind of renewal. You still have, you know, let's say the senior center passes an override in August or whatever, you still have a thirty day out, there's obviously still gonna be some time to move in there. So, you still have the opportunity to transition over there, you're not, you know, tied to the whole year for this. But they need to know, we're moving forward June thirtieth at night, okay? Then I'll follow up on the town meet, special town meeting and Spencer's Brookfield, uh, budget discussions. And the one thing that came, this kind of, kind of snuck up on me was, um, our community development block grant workshop. Uh, if you recall, we received funding, we were notified last, uh, fall about, actually, was it not fall? I don't know if it was that, that, um, actually I think it was this, this past early spring, notified that we were awarded this grant. The next grant round was more housing rehabilitation, was the downtown property assessment planning project. Um, and we did that, we kinda got that in, in there while we were doing the design of Mechanic Street, which is now done. So, we've now since submitted another application for funding, for eventual funding and construction of Mechanic Street and more housing rehab. This comes out of a project that we combined with North Brookfield, if you recall, so they're doing some housing rehabilitation project, a housing rehabilitation project. We've continued ours, which started in two thousand and eight, and then on top of that, we have funding for seventy-five thousand dollar planning project. Which would allow us to look at fifty to sixty proj- properties in the downtown and do a, you know, physical property assessment. And reuse revitalization planning, uh, document. Um, when we, when we started talking about this with the consultant, the funding, we have to expend this money before December thirty-first or we lose it. Okay, so what we need to do is get this going, our concern is that if you're gonna do pub, and we have like three or four public forums tied to this. You wanna first have one to kick off the project, then you're gonna have one when they come back with, these are the properties, these are some of the topics we've talked about, and then you're gonna have a final one. Here's our final, you know, action plan and recommendations, and there's a lot of planning going on in between. There's an architect on board and, and, and other consultants as well. Summertime is a real bad time to have public workshops, July and August, uh, as, you're not gonna get people to show up. So, our first available meeting is, is this coming Monday at a workshop, I figured if we had a light agenda, get this on there. What we've done is we've, we're gonna advertise it in the paper, we've already sent articles to the, to Spencer's New Leader. Um, they, um, we've, uh, posted a public, like a public forum ad, I should say. We have a mailing list of all, all, an email list of all the business people on, in downtown, we emailed them already. Uh, we have a mailing list of, of about a hundred and twenty-five properties that we're thinking about, we're gonna narrow that down to fifty. But we sent a hard mailing to all of those folks as well. Um, and it'll be on the website in the usual places as well. So, we hope we get, you know, John was at the one we did on Mechanic Street, there's probably twenty-five people there. And that was only for one, you know, one thousand foot segment of the street, so I would hope that by, one, combining it as, as a selectmen's meeting. Two, notifying, you know, I have my own email contact list of, that you may have received today of all the town officials. Though, some of those folks come, some of the property owners come, some of the business owners come, and then some of the public comes just by seeing the ads and, and are interested. I hope to have somewhere between twenty-five and fifty people on Monday night. Um, so I apologize if it snuck up on you, however, I'm, we're under the gun, that if we don't hold a public meeting until September, we're not gonna spend this money before. December thirty-first, we need to get, get going on this, so that's one thing that's been added to, um.
Orders, any issues with that?
So you have a draft agenda, I'll finalize that, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Do you have a town hall position updates?
Uh, I will, I'll, I'll be able to update, I don't know if I'll be able to do that on, um, Monday, as, as you know, I'm not gonna be here Monday. So, the consultants and, and Michelle Bucktown Planner and Steve Todd will be helping on the, on the workshop.
Okay.
And obviously in the, I put these things on the agenda for this town meeting and Spencer's Brookfield, just so you guys have a general discussion. Pretty much gonna always be on the agenda for the rest of our lives. Um, but, um, and then you have, the only thing you have to do really without me is take a vote on the fishing game, right? So, uh, and I'll get you all the information you have on that. But the, uh, the town positions, as you know, Mr. Rock is leaving, so Town of Rutland, the Town of East Brookfield, and Town of Spence are working on hiring the same person. So that's kinda, that's kinda what we're working, and then, um, we have, uh, some vacancies to fill because people retired. New person became elected in the treasurer's office, the treasurer's retiring, so we have some moving around of different support staff. So, um, I'll have an update on that in the next couple of weeks, but, um, it's all in process. So I don't know if I have anything formal for you for Monday, but just wanna let you know that I'm working on.
Will you be here for the workshop after this one?
July, um, it's July, we have, we have, you know, we have four meetings scheduled in, in between July and August and who knows what, we'll have more.
We'll just move that to the July workshop.
It'll be July fourteenth or July twenty first.
To be, to be determined. Okay, thank you.
Well, in July we go to our, we change.
We, we did it last year, we went to a summer schedule, but because of the.
No, I'm just being, we're not on Monday, we're not doing Monday.
We don't have a scheduled meeting from Monday to July seventeenth.
Right, yes.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, we have one, Wednesday meetings from here on.
Yeah, I think everyone knows about your.
Oh, we're not going to, we're not going to, okay.
Oh, something happened.
All right, the last, last meeting, I asked you guys if you could move, uh, a couple meetings in the summer from Mondays to Tuesdays. Because I have class on, uh, uh, and then in the fall, do Wednesday schedule and there was like ten meetings in the fall. So what I wasn't expecting and kinda lost my mind that night was, I was hoping that you would move those meetings to Wed- to a Tuesday nights. But then I think Chris and I think Gary said I can't do Tuesday nights. So you moved your meetings in the summer to W- to Wednesdays. The fall, Wednesday's not a problem for me because I only have class on Mondays. Problem is in the summer, you double up, it's two classes per week instead of one. It happened to be Monday and Wednesdays. So when you guys said, well, I can Wednesdays, I went, said, that's fine, you know, we move Monday, I'm good. But I, I totally forgot to have double classes, this, one class, two nights a week, seven weeks, rather than one class, one day a week, fourteen weeks. So what I then decided after talking to Tony is like, let's just keep our regular schedule through the summer on Mondays, okay? All right, and then we're not gonna go to a Wednesday schedule until September. So September, October, and November, you'll have Wednesday schedule.
Can you send me a calendar?
You got it, you got it, you already got it. Bo's looking at it right in his hand.
Yeah, right here.
So July and August are the same, you have the same schedule, Mondays, nothing changes.
All right.
The only problem that's, the only that's a problem is, is my attendance and we'll have to work around that.
We can throw him off, it's not a problem, all right.
Dead weight anyway.
You know, if I can go to class late and you guys meet earlier, there's nothing, we're not doing anything, just talking about our vacations.
You wish, yeah, you wish.
You know, I'll skip over.
Vacation, what's that?
I'll let you know, I'll, I'll let you know in three weeks. When I get back.
So we have our calendars ready.
You have your calendars, Mondays until, until, uh, September.
This is the newest thing.
But it doesn't change.
Go by that, keep that with you.
The fall, you're gonna go Mondays.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, moving, moving along. Board liaison reports. Does anyone have any board liaison reports? Um, I just got back from a, uh, a teach negotiation session that's going on. The, uh, Sudden Block continues, we, we should be getting an RFP out very, very soon on that. I'll have a better update after the next meeting. Uh, I also had an interesting call this week. The, uh, Agricultural Commission actually got back to me.
Did.
Uh, Bob Knight, Bob Knight, is that somebody you sound familiar?
Yeah, that's the president.
Um, he thinks they'd be very excited about looking into a, uh, a farmer's market up at the, at the fairgrounds. Um, I told him that he, that was the group that I think needed to be heavily involved and help manage it. And he says he thought a lot of people would be into volunteering and getting it moving. So he's having a meeting, um, this Thursday. So in the upcoming meetings, I hope to give, uh, give you guys a better update. And I think in the end I'll request a, we hate them, but another subcommittee to, to work with those folks. With those folks being on the committee to move forward, getting that, this idea in motion for, for next year.
I think that's great. I think that was one of the things John had mentioned.
You know, it's just come up with, with Mike and all the ideas for using that, that asset, so.
I, I just thought this was the easiest one to, to start with.
Very good. Nice job.
Anything else as far as liaison reports? All right, uh, anyone have to come forward with citizens input? Bob?
Evening, Bob, sir, at twenty-three Summit Street.
I, I gotta agree with Gary, a hundred percent. Forty-five votes, guys, forty-five votes. You know, I don't think Chief Poses could've said it any better, you know? We have, we have a fire department that can't be trained now, they can't, they can't perform life-saving operations because there's no money. We got the town hall closed two days a week, they're laying off people at the library, senior centers lost again, highway department, they're laid off. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you guys, and you guys are sitting here going, geez, I wonder if we should do this again or not. Seriously? John, I understand where you're coming from. You and I have talked about that before. I mean, I get it, I, and I respect your opinion. But we're talking about. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm frustrated because it's like, I think there's more of a concern worrying about what the school committee's gonna think at this point than what you guys think. And that bothers me because the school committee doesn't even have a clue what's going on. They are so wrapped up in another universe at this point. If you guys have an intended meeting, and I know Tony, I've seen you and, you and John, and I know Gary makes it when he can. I've never seen a group that's in such horrible shape as they are right now. They're, you can't say we're better off than we were a year ago. You combine this with the school, you're gonna get shot down in flames. This thing went down horribly and it went down for a reason. Lack of information, lack of input, stonewalling. I mean, Dr. Malby has done nothing but stonewall everybody. Vinnie Cludia just tore you guys up, not only in a meeting, but in the paper. I mean, lately it's been like one huge Valentine to Vinnie and the new leader. I don't get it. You know, this is, this, this school committee is a train wreck and the superintendent's even worse. And that's not gonna change until we get rid of him, but as you guys might recall, it was Vinnie's idea, we don't need to look for a superintendent now. Since then, a half a dozen have been hired. You know, there's, there's people out there and they need to get this thing going. And they're still stalling and dragging their feet. The other thing is change the hours back to seven to seven. Make the voting hours what they used to be. They're supposed to be that for national elections, they used to be that in this town, they need to be seven to seven again. We disenfranchise all those voters who were the early morning voters like myself and everybody, all these other folks. And don't forget the seniors vote heavily in the morning because they can drive. A lot of seniors can't drive at night. A lot of seniors have to depend on their kids to drive them at night. Kids don't wanna come home from work and drive their parents to the voting polls. That's not a big issue for them. You know, there's citizens out there and we've talked to a lot of them on the sites, on our site and on other sites, who are willing to go out and advocate. You guys need to tap into that. I'll get you the names. There's people willing to go out and knock on doors. This is too important. This is a decimating budget. You guys know that. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not trying to tell you anything or yell at you. I'm just saying, come on. This needs, this needs another shot. Package it. Yeah, I, okay, I, I, I get along with that, but like, like Al was just saying to me, you can't put seven items on, on a thing. And let people cherry pick because people are gonna get confused. I can't tell you how many people I've talked to since this vote that were absolutely amazed that the lake is closed, there's no swim lessons, the parades are gone.
Yeah, they didn't read, they didn't read the election.
Yeah, well, you know, it's, it's not, and it wasn't, don't get me wrong, and we said this on our show, it's not from a lack of information that you guys put out there. You guys did a fantastic job. Adam, again tonight, my, my hat's off. Great job explaining this whole debacle. The bottom line is, you guys are leaders of the town. You guys have got to advocate for this. Give this thing another shot. This isn't just a question of, oh, we lost the senior center. I, I get that. It's like, okay, the voters have spoken. There were so many parts to this thing and you guys know that, you guys sat at every one of these meetings. My God, Adam, you put me to sleep four or five times when I was here. I mean, because we saw these over and over and over and over again, but not everybody, not everybody understood the complexity of this thing or how much was actually involved. Please, 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 change the voter hours back to seven to seven and get this thing back on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, he's brought a paper with him.
Al Kowalski, one thirteen Men of Rhodes Spencer. This is regards to. The winter road repairs, the governor gave the towns, cities and towns forty million dollars to fix the roads. At some point, and it has to be used by ju- uh, end of, uh, September. And be awarded by June. And I was wondering, how much money did, did the town of Spencer get and how was it used?
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
That was the number.
And it doesn't go very far. Uh, we had to put into the State Department of Transportation a list of projects. And I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head, it was put in by Steven Tyler, but I can tell you seventy-five thousand dollars is not gonna go very far.
No, no.
It's, again, it's called potable money for a reason.
It's like a coal patch.
That's what you're gonna get.
I was excited, I called Adam that day.
He called me that day. How much do we get? Forty million's out there, what's our, what's our, uh, uh.
What's our take, yeah.
So we'll make it go as far as we can.
No, I was just was wondering.
Yeah, no, good question.
If we got it in here, though. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. Board and staff member comments?
Mr. Pepe, I, I only have one announcement, uh. And I never do this in a meeting because I leave family out of it, but my wife, uh, was in Waldham on Friday, uh, with the Mass COA. She became a certified senior center director. I had no clue what that meant, other than she worked on it for a year and a half. Adam signed it for, uh, and virtually what it is, is when people are advertising for a senior center director. The ad will always say either a bachelor's degree, master's degree, or certified, uh, certification by Mass Council on Aging. And, and I tell you, she got a hundred. The book is this big that she had to put together, so kudos off to her. What a great job. I wish I could've been there, but I was babysitting. So a great job by her, so just want everybody to know that.
Very good, and board, congratulations. Congratulations, Pam, on certi- on certification. Any other comments?
Just a reminder that I have hours from seven to eight tomorrow night in the town administrator's office.
It's on the website, it'll be today.
And it's, um, it's, and I saw it in the paper. And for anyone who wants to just come in and, and chat for whatever reason, if, if you, if you can't make these forums and really wanna, you know, leave us with some ideas or just come and vent. I'm, I'm there, so I look forward to talking with anybody who's available and wants to drop by. On whatever subject related to the town and the job we're doing.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else? There are no others, I will take a motion.
Motion for adjournment?
Motion, I have a motion, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, our next meeting is, do you have a calendar, Albo?
Well, I just.
Monday, June sixteenth.
Monday, June sixteenth workshop. McCourt Social Hall at six P M. Thank you very much.
Thank you and a good night.